To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Get things started here. We need to, a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the medias 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next we'll have the, the.
Check with Bill, see if Bill's on.
All right, that's okay. We got a couple of people on Zoom tonight. Bill Holmstrom, Councilman Holmstrom, are you with us? Can we hear you? Can you hear us?
Can you hear us? Can you hear me?
I got you now. Can you hear us?
Yes.
All right, we should be good. And who else is on Zoom? Is Marlene on the Zoom? Just want to make sure if we can get her as well.
Okay. Hello?
Hello, is that Marlene?
Yes, this is her.
Okay, just want to make sure you could hear us and we could hear you. Thank you.
It's in here, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, perfect. All right, moving on to the leadership, leadership statement. City of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next item is the city, the council workshop report from Monday, June 9th. I won't read that to you. It is available online if anybody would like to review that. We'll move us to public comment for tonight. So, anybody got any comment, public comment in town? Okay, step up to the podium and state your name, please.
Jim Dannen. Live at 315 Fifth Street, Southwest. Was just, I suppose everybody knows there was a little bonfire in our neighborhood the other night and, and stuff. And I guess I was just gonna comment a little bit on things that have gone on after that, a little bit and stuff. I've noticed that there was additional patrols and stuff in the area, a lot of rubbernecking and this kind of thing and stuff. And then we had a little vandalism in the neighborhood the other night. And I think some of those things were tied together and stuff. And so it just concerns me about the safety in the neighborhood and stuff like that. So that was all I was gonna say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment this evening? Not hearing any, we'll move on. Next item is the public hearing. We have none today, tonight. Next item is old business. We have none of that as well. So our first item under new business will be to consider appointment to Ward 1 council vacancy to serve between, from July 1st, 2025, through the canvassing of the November 2025 election. Mr. Don.
Yeah, so interviews were held on Monday, and I don't really have anything to add. I would just turn it over to the mayor and Bill Holmstrom may make sure he's unmuted so we hear him for the vote or motions or whatever. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. So nominate Kristen Rode. Hold on just one moment.
I want to thank all the, the ladies for, for stepping up and, and we had quite a meeting there tonight, a lot of questions, a lot of good answers from everybody, and that's for sure. And I would like to move Kristen Rode as our Ward 1 council person.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Palmer.
I'll second.
Nominate Kristen Rode, second by Mr. Lamos. Any further discussion at this point? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Nay.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom? Aye, okay, gotcha. And Mr. Davies?
Aye.
All right. So with a vote of four to one, Mr. Hobbie, Hobbie being absent and not part of the, of the vote, Kristen Rode will be appointed to the Ward 1 council seat effective July 4th, first. So, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now, here we go. Now we gotta spend some money. So, entertain a motion to approve the client claims as submitted by staff in the amount
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Greifey.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. And just a note that the claims are higher due to the June 1st debt payment for the water and sewer projects. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Was that a nay?
Yes, nay. And opposed, so.
Sure that was what it was?
Okay, let's go, let's go through that again one time. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
Okay.
What?
Sorry, we're having a tar, tar time hearing you, Bill. Is that a?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're good. Pay the bills. Thank you. Next item, Congress, we got some ordinances that we need to look at. The first one being the ordinance 406. That's the ordinance amending Chapter 56, dangerous and vicious animals. This is something that we've, we've gone around and around and around and around with this one. We've had, we've had a lot of, I call it experience on this over the past several years. We've been working on this ordinance over, for over a year now, and we're trying to get this updated a little bit. So, that's what I got is, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 406.
So moved.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey, to approve the second reading of ordinance 406. Is there any further discussion at this point?
I, yes.
Okay.
Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Well, I, I'd like to read a statement, but I'm not sure it can be heard properly. If you feel you can hear me.
We can hear you fine. We can hear you fine.
Okay. Well, I'll just start then. For the record, I wish it was possible for me to agree with those advocating for this amendment. It'd be nice if I'll get along and put this measure behind us and proceed to more pressing matters, which would be a benefit to the citizens of Hampton, but I can't. The whole premise for this amendment is based on false narratives. For example, it was said that it will shorten the time to, in which to have a dog removed and declared vicious. To be declared vicious, perhaps, but to have the dog removed for the safety of our citizens, that's not true. Our police chief has our, has that authority already. Under the current ordinance in place and the responsibility of any police officer, an animal who the investigating officer determines to be an immediate and imminent threat to the public could be impounded immediately. In fact, our police chief stated that he would do just that at our last council meeting. If this revised ordinance was drafted to shorten the time of this matter reaching the city council, the mayor has the authority to call a special council meeting at any time if the situation needed to be addressed timely, without any additional cost to the city. But what bothers me the most is the facts of why this amendment is before us tonight are extremely sketchy. No known records on file at the police station or the post office of an incident that a mail carrier being chased and knocked on by an animal who has just bitten another individual. After investigation, the individual themselves stated that she just backed up with the satchel between herself and the animal and fell down. Councilman Palmer even stated that the facts were unclear, that the postal employee scribbled something quick and then went on vacation or something, that the whole neighborhood had to, had to change their type of delivery from house delivery to the street delivery, which was the proper thing to do. But let me ask, has anyone ever approached the new postmaster to see if home delivery could be resumed since the offending dog had been put down? Well, I have, and the postmaster indicated that he would consider such a request since the threat to his carriers no longer exists. The offending dog has been put down, and since the event of last year, he has had no reports of any such incidents happening in the affected area. The incident that actually brought this up had nothing to do with the failure of the original dog ordinance, which has been on file since 2017, but it was, in fact, a failure of enforcing our current ordinances. I want to be clear, I am in no way insinuating that our current police force has failed in its duties of enforcement, but I am stating that we must, if our city is to prosper, to do a better job, a more efficient job, of educating our citizens of current ordinances, why they are important, and how they are going to begin to enforce them. The offending action began when the unlicensed dog ran out of a house and attacked a mother and a daughter who were walking their dog past their home, and the attacking dog biting the daughter on the arm. No license was on that dog, no immediate proof of rabies vaccine was found, no citation for the unlicensed dog, no citation for the dog running loose, no impoundment because the rabies vaccine could not be verified. However, the owner of the attacking dog was issued a vicious dog letter, but not until 12 days after the incident, after which he indicated he would file an appeal to the notice. The dog owner was then given an appeal date 27 additional days later. Then 11 days after the vicious dog letter was given, that same dog runs loose again from the same house and attacks another dog that's walking his animals, causing so much damage that the dog walker's animal had to be put down because of the pain and cost in surgery. Still, the information did not reach the city council for another 16 days. In the meantime, the owner had been put down after the second attack, and the owner did not appear before the city council, and no citation for failure to appear was cited. This incident took 39 days from the date of the first bite which occurred until it was received by the city council, and absolutely no new ordinance would have helped in this situation. We don't need a new ordinance. We need a public information campaign stating the current ordinances, why we need them, and that the city will request that our officers begin, officers begin enforcing our ordinance for the safety of our citizens. It is my belief that if our current ordinances had been enforced, that this amendment would not be before us this evening. And you know, there are vicious dogs, but not every dog that bites is vicious. Perhaps they're just having a bad day. Stuff happens. Dogs are surprised on a hot and muggy day. A child is pulling its tail or teasing it. You may even think that it is just protecting its owner, or it just wants to say hi to the mailman and gets overly excited. Yet, under this new ordinance, if an investigation officer, and an investigation is performed by an animal to get to the animal control officer of the alleged vicious animal, the officer shall immediately seize the alleged animal, alleged to be vicious, and cause it to be impounded pending the results of the investigation. By doing this, you have, in fact, hindered our police officers by taking away a very valuable tool in the police chief's toolbag, and that being discretion. And by doing this, will there be enough places to impound all of these dogs? At the last council meeting, one of our council members said that the places for impoundment are limited, sometimes not even available. I guess perhaps the police chief could impound them in the city manager's garage if we can't find the space. If, or perhaps I should say when, an animal is impounded, as the proposed amendment states, that the officer has no choice in the matter, and the pet owner has done everything required to be a responsible pet owner, licensing, vaccines, socializing, made honorable attempts at containing his or her animal, and the owner appeals to the city council, and the council deems the animal not vicious, the new ordinance places an undue burden on the citizen by mandating that they pay for the impoundment costs, which could reach into the hundreds of dollars. This is not justifiable. I would like to commend Councilman Davis's recent code council article in the Hampton Chronicle concerning responsible dog ownership. I appreciate that Councilman Davis stated that the ongoing discussions and amendments aim to enhance public safety and ensure responsible dog ownership within Hampton. This is an admirable goal. However, this new ordinance will not accomplish the stated goal where an information campaign might. When I mentioned perhaps we needed an education program for the citizens of Hampton to inform our citizens of what is expected of pet owners, all I heard was silence. In fact, when I put it to a motion that would reject the new ordinance, I could not even secure a second. A second meeting and proposal was up for additional discussion. Not that any of my fellow councilmen agreed with me, a second just to discuss the issue before us, yet nothing but crickets could be heard. I was concerned, to say the least, not because of no second being made, although that was troubling and concerned me. The most, what concerned me the most was that I actually could sympathize with that empty podium before us when the mayor asked for public comments and there are none. What does this tell us? Why should this concern all of us? Because it tells us that maybe the public has given up. Maybe the public think, what's the point? They won't listen. They're not hearing what I have to say. The council's minds are already made up. That thought should frighten every councilman because it sure frightens me. This proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 56, dangerous and vicious animals, was unnecessarily, poorly drafted, and a detriment to the citizens of Hampton. This ordinance does nothing but frame the city of Hampton as being unfriendly and unwelcoming to pet owners. We do not want or need this label. It does nothing to speed up any process. It does not enable the police officer in any way in determining whether a dog is vicious or not, but it is, in fact, a direct infringement on the Hampton citizens' property rights and finances. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Palmer?
Couple things, and I appreciate Bill's thoughts on that. When Mike Arndor for the new postmaster started, about the first thing I did after he started was I went in and I asked about this. And he said it was a district decision before, and so that has to stay. So I assumed it was a district decision, and, and I wasn't even sure if the dogs, there was two dogs in this case, that chased the, the mail carrier. And I hadn't, wasn't even sure if the dogs had been put down. She works at Colonel Whipple in the back of, back of the pharmacy. And I never did ask her again about if she'd ever licensed dogs or, or had rabies shots. Again, I just kind of put it on my mind. So I don't know, as far as a personal aspect, I don't know if those dogs still exist. If they can get the mail carrier route back to the home, that would be great. That'd be fantastic. Second of all, it just so happens that all six of the city council people who heard that story about the mail carrier getting chased down the street, falling over the curb, and putting up her bag, and then writing a hastily written note and going on vacation are here. And I guess to me, we heard it firsthand. Dick Lukensmeyer's even in the audience as well. I mean, that's, I guess I want to ask Steve or Jim or Barry or Dick or anybody, that's what we heard, right? That the mail carrier was chased, put her bag up, and I don't know if she fell over or was, she was on the ground anyway. It was her, between her and the, and the, uh, dog was her, her mailbag. Steve, Mayor, is that correct, what you heard?
That's, yes, that's what I heard.
Yep. And Jim?
Yep.
I think she was trying to shield him with her bag and then fell over some bushes.
Mm-hmm, right. And, and she was going on vacation to Hawaii, I think, that later that day, or going somewhere, and she just, just wrote it down. I don't think it was on, it was two sentences or so. It was on a, like a notepad or something. You remember any of that? Yeah, Dick shaking his head. Yeah, so I mean, to say this didn't exist is a little far-fetched when we got six people in the room that said, yeah, we were there and it existed, and that's what, that's what happened. The vote was four to two not to deem the dog vicious based on the fact that the dog owner was going to get an electric training fence or something like that. But anyway, next time I'm in the drugstore, I have to ask her if she still has those dogs or not. But those, that was how six people remember what happened that night.
I mean, the dog was on leash, but it broke it.
Broke it, yeah.
And that, that happens.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I don't remember. Were they gonna put an electric fence in?
Yeah.
Yes.
Was that ever inspected?
No.
Followed up on?
No, not that I know of. Can't speak, I don't, I hate to put words in people's mouths, you know?
Right.
But I think if, if, if this fails, on the next go-round of this, if we have another go-round, I would like to put in that if, if you're gonna have an electric fence, it needs to be inspected. So, anyway, that's my two cents, sir.
All right.
I have a comment. A few comments. Thank you. I'll be short, I promise. I am asking my fellow counselors to remember why we began this journey in the first place. That seems to be getting lost in all of this. Last summer, a vicious dog escaped his home confinement after his first dog-human attack and attacked again. That part of our code does not give the police department permission. They weren't there, they didn't witness the attack, they came and they took information and made a decision, but they're not authorized to seize the dog and impound him at that time. So there's a gap in our vicious dog ordinance that allowed this to happen, and we all felt it very deeply. One of our primary purposes as a city council is to assure we have a safe community to visit and live in. And we have worked on this ordinance. Police chief and our code enforcement officer have spent hours on this, and we've worked on it for over a year, and at a minimum to the expense of $1,500. I feel very good about the revisions to this code. I'm ready to continue and move forward with it. I do not want to go back to my ward and shrug my, shrug my shoulders and say, never mind. These revisions are not discriminatory against our lower-income citizens. A responsible dog owner works in the ownership expenses of having a dog into their budget. Now, if we begin to shoulder the impoundment fees because a citizen can't afford them, what's the cutoff point? What, if you make less than $30,000 a year, we're going to pay your impoundment fees? I mean, how do we even start that process? And if a dog owner cannot bail his dog out because the dog hasn't had rabies vaccinations, isn't registered, and doesn't have his, what do I want to say, scanner thing in, are we gonna pick up that tab too, so this low-income citizen can get their dog out of doggy jail? You know, where does that proposal stop? We can keep going on with that. And the code adjustments do not make Hampton an anti-dog community. It does just the opposite. If we expect and enforce dog ownership, responsible dog ownership in Hampton, Hampton becomes, Hampton becomes a safer and more compatible environment for dog owners and their pets. And just a quick point of interest, yesterday on NBC, they ran a story that vicious dog attacks on mail carriers are increasing in our country, and guess who's number one in our country?
Iowa.
Iowa. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to comment.
Are you finished, Ms. Greifey?
I am finished.
Okay, Mr. Lamos?
This article that Bill had written, the ball was dropped right there. And that's what started this conversation. If that would have been taken care of properly, we wouldn't be talking about redoing this. And if it doesn't go through, I'd like to see something tied with your rabies vaccine, with your license and chipping. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't mesh, having a rabies vaccination for three years and then licensing your dog every year. Why not combine that, and then if it's chipped, why have a dog license if it's chipped? And then have a information campaign for the citizens to get their dog chipped.
I'd like to address that, if I may.
Sure.
It is state law that dogs are registered annually, and we cannot, we can be firmer on state laws, but we can't be softer.
That doesn't tell me anything.
Well, they have to be registered every year. It's a state law.
They're gonna be registered if they're chipped.
I hope so, yeah.
But not necessarily with the city that they live in.
Right.
It's chipped with the, with the chip company.
Mr. Palmer? And I don't have to get my dog vaccinated in Hampton if I am comfortable with another vet in Sheffield, or Actley, or Mason, so that, you know, and they're not gonna provide a service and let Hampton know that they've, they've satisfied the chipping, because that's kind of an optional thing that we require, but not every town does. Mason City, if you get a lost dog up there and they take it to the pound, it's automatically chipped. And so, I'm for the chipping, and I'm, I'm for the new, the new ordinance. And I can't be responsible for, in the past, if the police department dropped the ball, if they went to the house, knock, 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 and the dog owner isn't there. I mean, we've had people dodging police forever. I mean, even today, serving a warrant on somebody in the south part of town. Just happened to catch them at home just because they happened to go there. So, yeah, you can avoid being home a lot if you don't want to get a warrant or a warrant served to you, and that's, that's just, you can, you can avoid lots of those things. But yeah, we have to have the dogs unfortunately licensed through city hall, because I don't want to put that burden on, on this veterinarian, and any veterinarian that's outside of our county, because it's not even their problem, so.
That's not gonna burden the vet. You, you have papers when you get your dog chipped.
Mm-hmm.
How's that burden the, the vet?
I'm not gonna make them responsible for, okay, now here's the city paperwork you need to fill out for the license.
Well, that, why would they have to do that?
They wouldn't. They'd have to come to the city hall.
They have to bring it in here.
Right, right, every year.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I got one more thing.
So do I, actually.
I want people to keep in mind, we're not changing.
Yeah, now go ahead.
We're not changing the entire ordinance. We're amending one section of the ordinance that gives our police department the ability to take information, they haven't witnessed the attack, to take information, to deem the dog vicious, and impound him, period. That's what we're trying to get changed. It didn't happen last year, not because the ball was dropped, because our police department doesn't have the authority. They didn't witness the attacks, so the dog was put under house arrest, and the owners did not follow through.
Well, I don't understand. If you have a proof of a vicious dog, how can that, how can they have to witness it?
Because they are just there taking information, taking stories secondhand from what the witnesses are telling them. If they If they witness a vicious dog, yes, they can put it down or impound it, but unwitnessed, they have to do their investigation, and based on that investigation, they deem the dog vicious, but they can't, they don't have, they don't have the authority to impound the dog. And that's just that small section that we're trying to change. That's all we're trying to get done, to protect our citizens so it doesn't happen again.
So I have just one, one, some input. It's not a lot, but the number one about the ball and the ball being dropped, we can go over that, and go over that, and go over that, but here's the deal, that's why we're where we're at right now. Three, four years ago, something happened, and we're working through that, and we're fixing it. That's what we're doing. We're not changing things. Now, the part about the, the tying to get to the city council, the new ordinance allows the PD or the Animal Control Officer, and Mark, keep me honest, to basically handle this immediately. We're either gonna determine, deem the dog vicious and get him out, but we're also gonna, you know, make it deter, determination, this is our first step. It's not gonna make to the city council on the first step. It's gonna be handled with the PD and the Animal Control Officer. Now, the dog owner doesn't agree with it, they have the right to appeal with it, okay? So when they appeal it, now it comes to the city council, and then we get everything, all the information, we rehash and rehash and whatever we gotta do, and we make a decision on the dog. The biggest, I mean, I've been on the council, since the city council for six years now, I haven't seen too many that get appealed. They're either vicious, and I think we've had maybe two that were not. So, I mean, we're, the, the one thing that I really don't like about, and Bill, and no, not, not kinda picking on you, but if we're gonna start throwing around that this is based on fault, never, narrative, narrative, if, if I could say it, I don't think that's good.
Okay.
I think it's on, I think it's based on fact, that's, it's, we've got experience through this council meeting, or the council that has, has experienced this, and that's where we're at. And, and it's, whether if it got, the ball got dropped, so be it, that's why we are here.
Mr. Mayor, let's talk about facts for a minute. The fact is, this didn't reach the council for 39 days. The fact is, we're not enforcing our current laws that we have on the books. Jerry Greifey, Councilman Greifey herself stated that, in her estimation, there was 2,000 dogs in this, this community, and only 56 were licensed. That means we're not enforcing our ordinances. You can't fix a law by making another law. If you don't follow the ordinance that you have, then what's the point of making new ordinance? You don't know if the current ordinances you have even work if you don't enforce them as the way they are, and you're not, you're not educating your public about these ordinances. There's a contradiction in the ordinances now where we can't, the impounded dog cannot be released to the public, the very ordinance in front of that says that it can happen. There's two ordinances side by side conflicting with each other. You're not paying attention to the ordinance that you have. And the police chief does not need our voice to tell him a dog is vicious. If he goes to that house and he sees that dog as an imminent threat, he has the, he has the responsibility, not even, not even, not even an ordinance can tell him to do it, but it is his responsibility to take that dog away, if he considers it's a responsibility. And to say that it's a duty of a responsible ordinance to make sure he has funds on hand just in case there's an accusation of viciousness and the dog is impounded, and then even the city council says, "That dog's not vicious, we're not gonna call him a vicious animal," that we make our citizens pay that fine, that's ridiculous. That's not a responsible pet owner's responsibility to have those funds set aside for that purpose. You're, you're just placing one law on top of another law, you're not enforcing the laws that you have on, on debt. And when you say, when they have to destroy a dog because the city council hasn't even seen the information for 39 days, when we missed two separate city council meetings and it still hasn't come to the city council, and that animal had to be destroyed, and you're saying it's not a, not a problem with enforcement? You're not, you're kidding yourself.
Well.
You know, I, I don't want you to take this personally either, either, Mayor.
Of course.
But you've gotten riled up right now.
No, I'm fine.
Well, good.
Here's basically what I'm, what I, I mean, you talk about this information campaign and getting that in front of the people, I've watched that for six years, we've put it in the newspaper.
Good luck with that.
We've put it on the radio, we've put it on chamber handouts, I mean, we've, we've given it to them. We can't make them read it.
And what you do, you have your ordinance stop people on the thing with their dogs and say, "Is your dog licensed?" If not, it's a $40 fine. Once you start, once you start mandating these ordinances, they'll start following. But if you keep ignoring them, they won't be following, and you're not making the community safer if you don't follow the ordinances.
Well, I think, I think your words were that the, the ordinance we have in place is working. So we are, we have followed the ordinances, and we do that, we're just trying to update it and make it better moving forward. Because everybody knows me, I don't go backwards, I don't talk about things four, five years ago, we're gonna move forward. Now, if that's where, that's where we're at right now.
I'll say one more thing, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll be quiet. I'll be quiet after I say this. Just because you have an ordinance on the book, and you're not enforcing it, then you don't have an ordinance on the book. If you're not enforcing it, it's worthless.
Any other discussion?
I have a question, or a point of clarification. Under the present ordinance, I guess, when would the dog be officially declared vicious?
Under the current one?
Yes. Officially declared vicious.
At the council meeting.
Right. See, what I like about the change is basically 56.05.1, where if I'm understanding the change correctly, after an investigation, you or your representative could declare the dog officially vicious, then the dog owner could appeal that at a hearing, as opposed to waiting under the current ordinance, waiting however long to finally have the dog declared vicious. That's the main thing I like about this, is make, allowing the chief to do that investigation in, hopefully in a timely fashion, and then declaring that dog vicious, and then going from there, rather than waiting for the council meeting. That's why I'm in favor of this change.
All right. Ms. Greifey's.
And, and again, I want to emphasize, we are not changing the whole code. We're amending it, we're updating it, hopefully making it better. And just, just to you, Bill, your line that says the council minds are already made up, and that thought should frighten every councilman, it frightens me. I can turn around and say the same thing to you. You're unwilling to listen to us, and we're, we're the people that have been here and have that experience. My fellow councilors have even more experience than I do, and again, I'm just asking you to respect that experience.
Mayor, our councilperson elect is shaking her head. She's, what am I getting into?
That's fine. So, all right, I think we've all heard everything we need to do, do on this, over and over, and, and over. So, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Palmer, we have a second by Ms. Greifey, to approve the second reading of the ordinance 406. So at this point, we're going to put this on a, on a roll, roll call vote to approve the second reading. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom?
No.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
So with a vote of four to one, we have approved the second reading of the ordinance 406. Thank you for everybody for your input, and we will move forward. Next item, we have a Resolution 2025-10, this is, author's resolution authorizing fund transfers for fiscal, fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026. Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution, as the mayor stated, authorizing fund transfers for fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26. Section one, as you see, that is considering the fiscal year 25, which we are still in until the end of June. And this is pertaining to the principal and interest on the debt of the SRF loan for the water plant improvement project, the first two items. The third one is transferring fund, $4,013.43 from Fund 600 to Fund 180 for the ARPA project-related expenses. That project is, is completed, closed out, and there was a little bit of funds, excess funds that were spent out of that fund for the project, and so we're transferring water funds into there to zero it out for the end of the fiscal year. The second page is for fiscal year 26, that's Exhibit 1, and I'm not gonna go through all those, this is the page that was in your budget that you approved, so you just recently approved these transfers, however, the auditor likes to see us do a separate resolution approving transfers, so that's what we're doing. And this impacts both fiscal year 25 closeout and the upcoming fiscal year 26. Any questions?
Not seeing any, any questions for Mr. Don on the, on the resolution, so I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-110.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Davies. This'll be also a roll call vote. Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Aye.
All right, resolution is approved. Thank you. Okay, now this for your, this is for a reading hour, so bear with me here, guys. We have our consent agendas on the, next item on the agenda, so it is, it concludes all of the, of the items that I'm about ready to read to you. Approving the previous minutes is drafted from Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, plus regular session, session, and Monday, June 9th, special session. Schedule the actual, next regular sevish, session for Thursday, June 26th, 2025, at numbers, at 6:00 PM in chambers, council chambers. And then we're removing, or approving alcohol licensing for Franklin County Convention Center, 1008 Central Avenue West in Hampton, this is a renewal. We are approving licensing for Franklin County Convention Center, in our same address, for a former owner's shared over ownership update. For Franklin County Fair, 1020 Central Avenue West, outdoor service during the fair. Pitt Row LLC, 919 Federal Street North, Hampton, is a renewal. La Cosita LLC, 121, 1 First Street Northwest, that is also a renewal. Quick Star, number 57567, has 320, or Central Avenue West, that's a renewal. Top of Iowa Lucky Wife, 303, Second Street South, Sway City, Iowa, 50590, for sales at Franklin County Fairgrounds during a special event on July 17th. Traveling Tapster LLC, at 3316 Rosewood Court Northeast in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for sales during, for, at Franklin County Fairgrounds during a special event on July 20, on July 17th. We're also approving tobacco licensing renewal for Casey General Stores, number 1001605, 719 Fourth Street Northeast. Hampton Dollar Fresh, 808 Fourth Street Southeast. Dollar Generals, number 2383, at 510 Central Avenue West. Get and Go Convenience Stores, number 9, at 319 Central Avenue East, Hampton. Quick Star, number 7576567, sorry, 307th Central Avenue West. Fairway Stores, number 902, at 309 Central Avenue West. La Frontera, Tienda, at 200 First Street Northwest. Family Dollar, at number 32965, at 40, or 411 Central Avenue West, and ANZ Elector, 721 Central Avenue West. I would entertain a motion to approve
So moved.
I got a motion by Mr. Palmer.
I second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did I hear Bill?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. All right, moving on to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Yeah, it's a busy time of the year, the summer's in full swing, we have lots of vacation and increased costs, so it's always fun throughout the summer. We had a good week last week with the Grand Festival, everything went smoothly with that, we didn't have any complaints there. We have the car show coming up this weekend, and we've started all our preparations for the fair in the next few weeks. Captain Holsney attended the firearms recertification at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy last week. All the officers completed TASER recertification. Officer Brass has been signed up for the September Academy class, and the last thing I got is we have a jury trial coming up, so, and that's gonna be in Worth County, so we're all preparing for that as well, so, busy couple weeks.
I'm not yet.
That's all I got.
Any questions for Chief? Mr. Lamos?
When you do the alcohol stinks, do you do that once a year, or when do you?
Oh, we did them twice a year last year, but through the state it is once a year.
Oh, you know, with the alcohol sales at the fairground, and then these other vendors coming in selling, do they train them on?
Yeah, they go, us or them?
Them. Do they get any kind of training on?
Yeah, they go through the IYD program.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I mean, it's so crowded. I'm not saying there's a problem.
We do check the fairgrounds. Now, I'd have to set up a specific date for, we generally just randomize a couple of days of the year, we set it up through the state, they do pay us to make those, I think it's $100 an establishment when we do it through them.
Okay, thank you.
But that would have to be set up in advance.
Any other questions for Mr. Chief Morrison? Not, thank you, sir. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor. We're waiting on Mother Nature to cooperate just once, but apparently she's not going to even tonight. The library project for the retaining wall and, and the removal of that dirt and everything, that started today. City staff broke up into a couple different directions. City staff broke up into a couple of different directions. The skate park pad project, that is underway. Heartland Asphalt's in town this morning and is working on that project as well, so that's moving forward. I'm hoping the pad will be in place, hopefully next week sometime. They're basically doing the core out and sub base work in there. They started that today, anyway. We did some division and conquering a little bit, so the dirt patching started today as well to fill those potholes, so they got a few done in the south. It doesn't take very long to go through that emulsion, but anyway, they were able to at least get started today. We'll probably be making a run tomorrow to get some more of that. Met with A&amp;M Electric to discuss getting a power supply to our new compost site guard shack. Met and discussed that with them, and they're starting to put that plan together for that. We're hoping possibly July 1, maybe to change things over to our new compost site facility. Rental inspections, had some of that this week. Also cleaned up some of the cornstalks on 8th Street Southwest and then over on Olive Avenue a little bit. That windstorm that we had a while back, it's just being, like I said, we're fighting Mother Nature a little bit. But anyway, the broom was getting down there a little bit, but we kind of finished it off, so we're going to try to replace that gutter broom on there when we get some time, which time has been a hot commodity lately, trying to find that. The backfilling of 321 Fifth Street Southwest, that's ongoing. We're working on that. We do intend to take down the two dead ash trees on that property and take out more of those shrubs that are along there. And then maybe get the yard graded out, get it to level, get some grass seed going in there as quickly as we possibly can. We're going to be outside the seeding dates. It might take us a little bit. We're going to have to probably water that a little bit more than we want, but we're going to have to do it. The doggy waste stations have, you know, they were ordered here a while back, and go figure, they were mistakenly shipped to Phoenix, Arizona. Not sure why or what.
They have a lot of that out there.
Right. So when we get those in, we'll, you know, do our best to get those, get some information from some folks and get those placed in good locations. Other than that, there's just a ton going on. It's that time of year, so I guess any questions or concerns?
Skate park, is that, since Heartland's doing it, is it going to be asphalt?
Yes. Yep.
What's, what was the cost difference between concrete and asphalt?
I can't remember, but I can get you the information. It was gonna, and it was, a lot of it had to do with our staff timing as well, you know, trying to knock all these things out is just, was hard. So I would say asphalt, yeah. I'll have to, I'll have to look it up for you. But it was, it was close.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tar? I hitting any?
All righty. Thank you.
Mr. Dunt.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thanks to the applicants for the Ward 1 position. Appreciate your desire to serve, and congratulations to Kristen. Look forward to working with you. Gave a presentation to Kiwanis and Rotary Clubs on Tuesday, I believe it was, and answered a number of questions, and I think it went well. Wrapping up the final details on the Beads Lake DNR sewer connection agreements, and hope to have them to the city council soon. Any questions?
When will that construction start?
Well, I'm not sure. I know they've awarded the contract. I think McDowell got it. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunt? I hear you, any? Thank you, sir. Moving on to our council reports. We'll start here with Mr. Davies.
Well, I'm stepping back from my interim director position at the chamber as a new chamber executive director has been hired, but I will be still helping out, focusing on Hampton Main Street program. Last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, I attended Main Street Iowa Orientation Session down in Des Moines. And then on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of last week, I attended the Preserve Iowa Summit in Muscatine, and this is a training for members of the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission. And I will be submitting a written report on both of those to council and also the one to the chamber board, but if you can't wait to read it, it's, it's in yesterday's paper, part of my chamber column and my city council column. I reported on both those activities, those events there. And then on Wednesday, August 13, put that date on your calendar, the Main Street America Accreditation Visit will be taking place. I'll be getting more information out, and we'll be needing some volunteers, specifically those that have been participating, such as the city council, will be meeting with that representative. And again, I'll get that information out to you and the public. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Holmstrom. Have you got a comment this evening?
Well, I just want to congratulate all of the applicants that have applied. Even though you weren't selected tonight, the fact that you put in your application says a great deal about your interest in helping and developing and growing the city of Hampton. A lot of people didn't step up, but you did, and that says a great deal about you and your character. And I'm looking forward to working with Christian Road, so looking forward to getting to know you, and that's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Lamos.
I'd like to congratulate all the applicants. You know, it's great to see young people interested. I was first elected, I think I was 40. I'm not sure. Anyway, some of the discussion during the interviews was Hampton's Water Quality Report, and there's forms, the reports back there on the table, and all the, you know, I don't know what it all means, but there are no violations. And I wanted to bring that up. I'd like to say, you know, this, this dog issue, we have talked about that more now at the actual council meeting than the planning session. And nothing's written in stone. We can, if that doesn't work, we can change it. So hopefully, hopefully it works. That's all I got to say.
Good point. Thank you. Mr. Palmer.
Yes. I again want to thank all the young people who stepped up, all the people who stepped up. I just shouldn't say young people. But anyway, it's, it's quite an experience. I've done this for 15 years. I had two different stints, eight years and then seven years. The thing that slays me, and by the way, you gals were famous, you had over 350 people watching on YouTube, and they weren't watching me. So, I mean, it was, I had more comments, people from miles and miles away who couldn't even vote or wouldn't even serve commented on who we should pick, so. But I've done this for 15 years, and I'm the youngest one up here. I'm 60. I know it's hard to believe. And I don't think that, on one hand, we can praise all the young people for stepping forward, and all the young business people we have in town. I mean, go down Main Street, especially the gals, you know, you got Britt, and you got, you know, Rocky and Floa pretty much taking over Willie's. The gals at U.S. Cellular, they're always friendly, keeping the place running. You got the gal at the hairdresser that moved from one, or the plant shop that moved from one place to another, the flower shop. And, and these are enterprising young people that are doing this. These are all people under 40, I have a hunch. And to deny them a seat at the table is somewhat disheartening. And so I made a decision that, I've talked over with my wife, I'm tired of going home pissed off at the end of the meeting, and she's tired of it. And, you know, what's wrong, Pat? Nothing. That type of thing. And, and that's not fair to her. And so, anyway, I will not be running for reelection this fall. So that opens up the door, so if you are so inclined, between August 11 and August 28, you get out there and you get yourself about 50 signatures from anybody in Hampton, because I'm at large, it's all over the place, and, and run a good, positive, issue-based campaign, and you too might be able to sit up here, and I hope it's somebody between the ages of 18 and 40, or 18 and 59. But I thank the city of Hampton for everything. I'll serve out the rest of my term, because that's what I'm paid for, and that's what the citizens voted for me on. But we've, I've helped so many times, and we've all worked together on so many things. Too numerous to mention, but anyway, we'll talk more about that later. But anyway, I just want to clear it up that there's five council seats and a mayor's job open this fall. And don't sit back on your hands and say, "Somebody else is going to do that." Do it yourself. And get your signatures, get them turned in, and let's move Hampton forward. I know there's a lot of potential out there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gee, Ms. Greifey.
I'll get to you.
Well, Pat, I'm sorry to hear you're not going to run again. I do take issue with you not including me and the young entrepreneurs. I attended Quarterly Coffee. Chamber has the Quarterly Coffee, every quarter. They are getting so large, I don't know what we're going to do. You know, they used to be, they have just grown and grown and grown, and now it takes an hour and a half to get through the whole agenda. But that's wonderful. That's perfect. And you two young ladies, I would love to see you jump on the Chamber. There are so many opportunities for you there. Just get out there and please, join us. I would love to see that. You have some great ideas, both of you, and we need that. We have had some shifts in the Chamber. We're continuing to move forward. Tuesday on the Town, I believe, is going well. I do want to point out that the Promotion Committee is running a 50/50 raffle. That means tickets are $5 apiece, and the jackpot grows every Tuesday. The last Tuesday on the Town, we're going to draw the winner. You get half of the jackpot, and the promotion gets the other half of the jackpot, and it all goes to a good cause. It goes to the Chamber. And I'm, I'm also thrilled with the number of people that have come forward and volunteered to help water the downtown flower baskets. It's unbelievable. We've never had this many volunteers before, and I'm thrilled about it. So thank you, everybody who has stepped up, and will step up, because I will call you.
She will.
Yeah, I will.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Greifey. May I report just a couple of items? First of all, congratulations to Ms. Rhodey. I believe that's how you spin it right, I said it right. Okay. On the Ward 1 city council position, I think you're doing a good job. And I appreciate everybody else that put their name in the pack, because as Pat said, we need people to step up, you know. If you got, I've actually got a number four on my, on my report, but if you have great positive ideas and you want to be part of the city council, come on, let's go. It's, we got five seats open, and this one. Anybody wants this one? I don't see, I don't see many hands, but, I mean, hey, it's a great opportunity, and you learn a lot, and you, a lot of stuff. So, that's all I'm going to say about that. As far as Ms. Rhodey, I kind of got an offer there, but we're going to, we're planning on types, swearing at you, no, swearing you in on July 7, which will be your first workshop. You go into office on the first, and then you got a, we got a holiday, so we're just going to do it on Monday, so we'll, we'll get you all squared away and get you a seat and move forward. Thank you. You're going to get tired of hearing me this, hearing me say this about, but it has, has to do with the election. You know, there's five, five seats in the mayor's chair open. Nomination papers will be available 8:25, and you need to be turned in by 9:28, by 5:00 P.M. So I'm going to remind you all summer, you know, that it's, it's time. It's an election year, and let's, let's make the best of it. And last thing, I'm just going to repeat this. If you have great, positive ideas and want to be part of the city, Hampton City Council, I encourage you to get on the ballot. We've got six members, six council members. We need to work together. You know, we're not one person doing this, and four here, and one, two, and it's six people working together. It's a great opportunity, and we just want to make Hampton a better community to live in and work in and whatever we got to do. And that's all I got. So what I'm going to say is, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill, you want out of here? Okay. Thank you. I'll make sure we got everybody. Anybody opposed, wants to stick around? Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.